Yay, they're all here.
And then Bruce, did you just take us up?
Do you guys want to do an audio check, people joining from the phone?
Sure.
Alan's giving us a thumbs up.
I can hear you.
Guys, can you guys hear me?
I can hear you, Catherine, and I can hear Alan. And what about Jay?
You're looking very lonely, Trish.
I am. It says three amigos here.
All right, we can hear you too, Jay. Great.
Y'all ditched me. What's up with that?
You're usually the one in Hawaii, so.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, last month I was in Texas for that one.
Are you guys ready to start or should we go back?
We can start. You get to.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag, and to the nation of America, and to the Republic, which is the one under God, and to the Israel, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. This first part is our organizational meeting, so we are going to have the swearing in of all the new or re-listed members. So, and then Alan.
Actually, we were going to do all members of the order tonight because we've had some years when we've done it and some we haven't. So Helena's gonna lead it. If you can stand wherever you are and place your hand on your heart or raise your right hand and repeat after Helena.
Aye.
Aye.
Trish.
Walker.
Name.
I.
Are we doing it all together at the same time?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Catherine Johnson.
Jonathan Trust.
Talanidifer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
The policies of the Brookings Harbor School District.
Policies of the Brookings Harbor School District.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of School Board Member.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge.
Discharge.
Of the Office.
Office of the School Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
During the term for which I have been appointed.
The term of which I've been appointed.
Is it appointed and not elected? Because technically, we're elected, not appointed.
You know, Catherine, I almost changed that, but we're just reading it directly from our board policy. Yes, we are elected, but our board policy for the swearing in says appointed. We could maybe update that in our policies.
Yeah, just to make sure we're doing it right.
Okay, so now we're gonna do the annual organizational procedures. I guess I go to this next page three, correct? So we do the board election first. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to say here. One of you, three and four.
So you need to, someone needs to make a motion. Nomination, make a motion.
Okay. Somebody needs to make a nomination or a motion for our two offices. So I'll make a nomination for Jay. Chairman of the Board.
Oh, died for a lack of a second. On to the next.
You know, I would second that, although I'd like to ask Jay, how are you doing? Do you have the time and the inclination to continue?
Um, definitely the desire. I mean, obviously, this last year, I've probably had to be remote more meetings than I have in the past, which has been quite a bit. So I am open either way. If we feel like there's somebody or somebody else would like to begin taking that role back, I would certainly support them in that process.
I already know, I mean, I would love to, but I already know that I'm gonna be traveling quite a bit for medical reasons, so it probably wouldn't be best for me.
I think you're doing a great job, Jay, and I would love to see you on myself, but I, and you got a lot of other things as well, so I'm just gonna give you a chance to say something, I guess.
Well, no, I appreciate that. And so, yeah, I mean, I'm, like I said, I'm open if somebody else would like to. I will definitely support that process and support them in that process, so.
Now, I have another question. Do we now call for a vote for this?
There's still no formal second.
Okay, yeah, Jay, no, Alan said.
He said.
Yeah, I would second it for sure.
Okay, okay.
Provided Jay's on board.
He said you would maybe do that if, yeah, okay.
Provided Jay's on board. I will second.
Unofficially, Alan, as a.
Okay. I'm gonna call for a vote for Jay, being our Chair of our school board for his coming school year. So I'm gonna call for a vote. Alan.
Aye.
Catherine.
Aye.
Jay.
Aye.
Trish. Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
So the next one is for Vice Chair.
I'll make a motion for Alan to be Vice Chair.
There you go. I'll second that.
I was about to ask how Trish is feeling, if she's, would like to continue or what's your?
Trish feels fine, but I'm still just learning this role, so.
Oh, well, if that's the case, I take that motion back. I make a motion for Trish.
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, well.
Provided Trish is on board, of course.
Trish is on board. She travels, but I won't be traveling as much because I'm raising a puppy again for canine companions, so I have to be here, so. Um, so I'll, there's just been a motion and a second, so I'm gonna call for a vote for Vice Chair. Trish is Vice Chair, yes. Alan.
Aye.
Catherine.
Aye.
Jay.
Aye.
Trish. Aye.
Congratulations.
That's all, oh, thank you. Is that, that's all for the board elections, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And then you can.
Now I have to read this next part.
You have to read it, but you can vote on it all as a group, right, Nancy?
Yep, you, if you want, you can take out a single piece, like meeting schedule, and talk about it. But you are welcome to say, like, I want to take B through N or C through N and make one motion.
Okay, I don't, do I have to read each one of these? No, okay, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if, you know, presumably you all looked at them carefully here, I'll go ahead and move that we
Okay.
accept the recommendations, B as in Bravo through N as in November, carry those forward.
Do I have a second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We're gonna call for a vote. Alan.
Aye.
Catherine.
Aye.
Jay. Hello, Jay. Trish, aye.
Aye. Sorry, I was saying aye, and I was like, oh, I'm on mute, sorry.
Okay, okay, so. So we have those done now, and that's it? We need for that?
And that's it, and then you just close the organizational meeting.
We're gonna close the organizational meeting, and we're going to now open the regular school board meeting. So I'm calling the regular school board meeting to order. First on the agenda is citizen input.
Okay, and we have some. Brindle Stubbs is here.
I need to read that blue card or something.
I'll bring you one.
Yep, we'll bring you one.
He's never done anything like this before, so I'm a little nervous.
Don't be nervous, it's all good.
Before we go.
Just let her read the rules.
Okay.
As a board, we welcome and encourage input from the public. Speakers will be given three to five minutes at the discretion of the board chair for their comments. If several members of the public wish to speak on the same subject or topic, we encourage you to appoint a spokesperson to speak for the entire group. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the board will not hear public complaints concerning current or past district personnel. Understanding that it can be uncomfortable for all involved, if your comments appear to be heading in this direction, I will ask you to stop and invite you to speak with me after the meeting in order to assist you in resolving your concerns. Thank you.
Okay, all right, I will, I will try to stay calm over here. Okay. Uh, good evening, members of the board. My name is Brindle Stubbs.
She's Duke's mom.
I'm Duke's mom, yeah, in case anybody knows Duke, wonderful, my wonderful son. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I did write it up. I'm just gonna read it, because that's fine as I get nervous. Um, I'm here to respectfully ask the board to continue allowing local charter school students the opportunity to participate in music classes within the district. These students may be taking a different educational path, but they're still growing up here. They depend on this community, not just for academics, but for connection, encouragement, and a sense of belonging. Music class is one of the few ways they can remain connected with their peers, allowing them to continue feeling part of the school. And they're not just receiving something from the program, they're continuing, they're contributing to it. They show up, they participate, they help keep programs like band and choir strong, which can be difficult to do in a smaller district. They care about being part of it, and they bring value when they're included. Uh, one of these students is my son. This past year, he struggled academically at the high school. He failed nearly every class except one, band. Music was the one place he remained engaged, successful, and connected. It gave him a purpose when everything else felt overwhelming. We've made the difficult decision to enroll him in Baker Charter School for the coming year, not because we don't value the district, but because he needs a different structure to help him stay on track and graduate on time. This plan is for him to return to the district for his senior year, and he hopes to stay involved in the music program during this transitional time. I understand there are financial realities when students enroll outside the district. That's not easy to navigate, but these few students attending music classes don't place any extra burden on the program. They simply participate. Taking that, taking that away won't bring back funding. It will only remove something meaningful that's been working quietly and positively in the background. The opportunity to attend music classes provides stability to these kids. It may seem small, but for students who are already facing academic or personal challenges, having one consistent and positive connection to school can make a big difference in their motivation and sense of belonging. These students aren't stepping away from the district because they've stopped caring. They're trying to succeed in the way that works best for them right now, and opportunities like music can help them stay grounded, connected, and moving forward. I know the board faces many responsibilities, and I appreciate the time and care you give to our schools. Please consider allowing this small group of students the opportunity to continue to be a part of something that supports their growth and helps keep them connected. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If you, next week, I'm back in the office, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so if you want to just give me a call or stop by, and we can chat, and I'll explain a couple of things.
Oh, okay.
That will make you probably feel better.
Okay, um, what, just like Monday through Friday?
Yeah, Monday through Wednesday next week.
Monday through Wednesday next week, okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Okay. Any more?
Any more?
I haven't received any. Is there any? What else?
Nope, nope, that's it. Okay. I'm gonna move on to the consent agenda. So I need to have a motion to approve the items in the consent agenda.
I move to approve the items in the consent agenda.
Have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the items in the consent agenda. I'll call for the vote. Alan.
Aye.
Catherine.
Aye.
Jay.
Aye.
And I as well. Okay. Next is district reports and information, comments from our superintendent.
Thank you. Um, so we're gonna start with the 2025 to 2029 Oregon Comprehensive Literacy State Development, other known as the LSD Grant, which the district office staff completed by the end of June. Uh, we were one of hmm, ninety-some districts, about half the districts in the state was identified as needing some help, and so about half of the districts are going to get funded.
Oh.
Um, and so we obviously did the best we could. Nancy did a fantastic job. She's our Worth, Worth Smith. Um, and so it's a four-year grant. Uh, we get $350,000 in the first year, and then we get $150,000 for the next three years.
Each year, 150, or, okay.
So three, and then 150, 150, 150. Um, it's fairly stringent as to where we can spend it. It is chunked up between preschool, K5, 6, 8, and, um, 9 through 12. So everybody, there has to be peace for everybody. Um, which is a little unchallenging. We had a great idea of what we wanted to do in the transition into kindergarten space. And so if we get that grant, we're gonna see if we can do our idea anyway, using some other grant funds. Uh, but we really would like to have a transitional kindergarten class. Uh, but we really would like to have a transitional kindergarten class that starts in January. They would start kinder about six months before they actually start, and so having a morning and afternoon session and having kids who struggle with basic school readiness come and get to know staff and teachers in the building and learn basic school skills.
So would they have to then be registered as a student? Is that how does that, that works? Okay, and meet all the?
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah, I mean, they would have to be five by September first, though, but like the same, same guides.
Same.
Yeah, and the challenge is gonna be, how do we find the group of students we're looking for?
Yeah, so they have to be, when you say preschool,
Mm-hmm.
that means they have to be under five, don't they? What's the difference?
Yes, so, well, they, they would just need to be before kindergarten, so you could do something where you work with Head Start and spend our part of the money at, at Head Start. Um, the kindergarten team is just really interested in having some of their kids come a little sooner and have a little more exposure, especially kids who haven't had a chance to go to preschool at all.
But not all kids would be under five, because some
Some wouldn't be five.
They're gonna be five.
Yeah, but as long as
Right.
Kinder, and then the idea is when kindergarten starts, the two staff members we would have who've worked with them since January would still be there. They still have a space, and they can then go and support the kiddos in their regular kindergarten classrooms. They'll have sort of a, an easier transition.
So we'd have two classes, so we'd have to have in January a staff member who are teacher.
Mm-hmm.
So we would hire a teacher mid-year?
If we would hire a teacher mid-year, or depending on how many students we have in the fall, we may have a teacher that could do that work. Uh, as we said today, we have sixty-three kindergartners.
We, oh, we only have sixty-three kindergartners?
Right now, for, for September, for August, uh, twenty-fourth, right now, we have sixty-three kindergartners.
So, okay, so processing that, I, I'm assuming the grant, they're expecting us to equally distribute the money amongst those, was it three different categories you said, or four?
Yeah, it's not quite equal. Um, it's actually, the least chunk is in, uh, pre-K. Uh, and then it's sort of equal. Um, but most for the upper levels, it's really meant to be professional development for staff. And six through twelve has already begun a robust, um, English language arts training with constructing meaning. Uh, where almost all staff will be trained, is trained at this point. Um, and so we would continue that, and we would bring that to K five as well, if we get this money.
Okay, so if we get the money, we'll still have to get, uh, so we have a couple hurdles. One, we need a, a matching grant of some sort to cover the cost of the teacher, because I'm assuming that teacher would be full-time, and then we would also have the hurdle of filling those spaces.
That is not, that is not as big of a hurdle as it was even twelve months ago.
Okay, because I was just thinking, if we only, we have sixty-three going in, I mean, how many students are we icing for the morning and afternoon class? I don't know what, are we at twenty-four per kindergarten? I, I don't remember.
No, we're, we are at sixteen, with the teachers we have right now, with sixty-three kids, we have sixteen, seventeen in each classroom.
Okay.
So the transitional kindergarten, you'd have a morning and an afternoon?
Mm-hmm, but it wouldn't be for all of them.
Right.
And so we would probably take maybe no more than twelve or fourteen in each section, so you would be able to have about a third of the total kindergarten class.
Got it, so we'd have about thirty incoming freshman, incoming, incoming freshmen.
Incoming five-year-olds, yes.
I mean, freshmen, that's funny.
Yeah, they are freshmen, in the true sense of the word.
Right, so then, okay, so we could, I mean, do we have any ideas of where we could get the funding for the, for the, the teacher?
We have some other funds that we could use for that, other grant funds. And so it's just a matter of every year, we write narratives for our early literacy grant, we write narratives for our Title I grants. Um, there are other places, and we write those narratives in mid to late August. And so we could, if we get the grant, we have an opportunity to, to change some things to be able to do that.
So will that grant, could that grant money pay for that, that teacher as well, or no?
Yeah, it can help.
It can help, okay. Okay.
Yeah, I think for me, I just would want to have a clear understanding of the finance, financial part, so that we're not, because we've had to be very careful about this next year and that we are very intentional, because if we have other grant money, I would want to make sure that that grant money wasn't designated for something else in the school district that could.
Well, it's designated to, one is fully designated to, um, early literacy. And the other one is, can be designated to many different things, depending on what the district chooses it to.
Right, but early literacy could also mean putting extra aids in the, you know, K through three classes, correct?
Um, it could, um, it's really not enough money to do that. It's less than a hundred thousand, uh, per year. Uh, I think our last was ninety-three, and so it doesn't, and that doesn't support more than a couple of instructional assistants.
Okay, and then how would it be sustainable again, going into the next year with that one instructor we hire?
Well, so then we have to look at what we already have on staff. And if we keep having kindergarten groups that are super tiny, we are not going to need the four kindergarten teachers that we have to teach kindergarten, so one of them could become a transition person. And then we have to look at the budget and see where we're at.
Okay, so you're thinking ma, even with the existing staff?
It, it's possible if we keep being very small. Um, we have agreed in the contract to keep kindergarten around twenty-one. So kind of magic number for kinders, twenty-one.
Okay, so the person we would hire in January would not have a job in, um, the fall if our numbers didn't go up.
It's possible, but that would be, you know, we have some elementary staff that's going to retire.
Okay.
So it's probably not as big of a concern as
Okay.
Yeah. We're getting to the end of the people that are gonna leave us, but we do have a couple more that are close to that, yeah. Uh, the other piece that I wanted to talk about is that we had sort of lightly touched on the district leadership team, the DLT, being slightly different for next year. And as you'll see in our next meeting, um, we have to revise, rewrite our strategic plan, because it is done in June of twenty-twenty-six. And so part of, of what you'll see in my goals process is that I want to work on that and that thinking the DLT will, their biggest, our biggest job with DLT this year will be to do the strategic plan for twenty-six through twenty-nine. Um, and what I would like you to think about is that if we have two of you present physically in any of the DLT meetings, um, it gets a little bit easier practically to do, and you could take turns if you all wanted to get a chance to do it. Um, and it would also take a little bit of the responsibilities off, not to have you all five in the, all the meeting, so. See what you think about that, or if there's two of you who really want to engage in that work, and maybe you guys do it.
So what would be the reason for having the board members?
Well, we've had all of you, right?
Right.
And so it just becomes easier as far as agendas and notices and postings and those kinds of things. If two of you are present, then we just
It's not a board meeting, Catherine, when there's only two of us, right?
Yeah.
I got it, okay.
And also the, the new law, we have to livestream every board meeting, and there's a lot of technical things, I think, that are tough.
Mm-hmm, yeah, there is.
Yeah, I guess my concern with that, that kind of defeats the purpose of what, that's then I, it wouldn't be a DLT. Um, as, you know, DLT, the purpose is for the board to be able to interact directly with the staff and hear directly from the staff what's going on for them. So if we're chain, I, I just, I don't think we, there would be a district leadership team anymore. That's just my take on that.
She's not saying we wouldn't be there, though. There'd be like two of us, or we could alternate so that we all are participating, and we can always report back to board meetings. So.
And, and the purpose for that is, because it's easy, it's easier in terms of not having two?
Well, I think if we are going to livestream a DLT meeting, you're not going to find out what staff is really thinking.
And, and you don't, I know that when I've been over
Right.
in Hawaii, I never hear what's happening when you have your breakout sessions, because I'm done after Helena talks.
I think Helena's indicated just the hesitancy to maybe say what they're really thinking.
Right.
Yeah.
Because they're not
I think they're, they're, they're very comfortable with all of you, and I think when we are sort of by ourselves and it's not a public meeting, I think you do get to hear what they are really thinking, but if we turn it into a public meeting, that's a different, it's a different setting, it's a different thing for staff.
And, and, okay, so I, because I, I missed, so as of what, July, August first, um, every meeting has to be, um,
Like
As of last January.
As of last January, yeah.
I missed that.
And we've, you know, we've done our board meetings like that for quite some time, so that wasn't anything new to us, but it does mean that every time that you guys are together in a setting like that, we would have to livestream. So it's just a, it's a different, it's a different rule.
Right, yeah, I, I, I'd like to give some, some more thought about that.
Yeah, you can, you, you have some time before we, um, roll into that, so we can decide later, just something to think about. For sure. Um, and that is it for me.
That's it for you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. Next are our action items, and we have none.
It's July.
It's July. And then after that, board functions and comments. The summer conference is from August eighth through tenth. Is anyone going to that, Nancy?
Not that, no.
Okay. And then the annual conference is the November sixth through eight at downtown Portland Marriott.
So Helena, was there a regional event?
Yes, so there is a board training that South Coast ESD is putting on, on August eighteenth, uh, from five PM to eight PM. Uh, my thought is that it is, there is a fair amount of new board members on the coast in our region. Um, none of you guys are new, and so I don't know how helpful that would be, but that is available. Um, I'm gonna be honest, I get a little cranky when it's from five to eight in Q's Bay.
Yeah.
That's a late night for everybody, so.
They're not gonna do any, um, streaming?
That's a good question. I will find out if you can remote, and they, they will probably set it up for, for us. They have a, a good um, Zoom system, so, yeah, they can probably do that.
Oh, okay. And then key dates and calendar updates, um, calendar will be updated with agreed-upon twenty-five, twenty-six board meeting dates as soon as possible. Welcome back breakfast for the district staff will be Monday, the eighteenth at seven-thirty in my cafeteria, assuming we're all invited.
Yes, you are.
And that's it, anybody have any comments?
Um, was that the one where you were concerned about there only being one new staff member this year?
No, that's, we haven't quite decided what to do with new hire day.
Oh, new hire, okay.
Going to take poor Beau and have, we will figure out how to teach Beau without, uh, and we need to make a better first impression than that.
So to each individual person?
Yeah.
Go see Terry, go see
Well, he's a wonderful young man, so.
He is a younger, he, and he is, uh, taught before, so it's not his first rodeo, so.
Cool.
It's gonna be great, so we're excited to have him.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay, then I'm going to adjourn our regular school board meeting. I'm gonna do this just for Jay.
There you go.
We're gonna stay on this link for the public, uh, portion of the work session.
Okay.
Do you guys wanna recess at all, or just roll straight in?
I'm good.
No, I'm good.
I'm good. I'm good. Okay.
Oh, you forgot to take out the
Do I have that? Oh, I did, it's, oh, well, and yours.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So, and for the board members on the call, um, Helena has, uh, two handouts, and I've emailed them to you in case you wanna look at them at the same time, or I can pull them up on the screen if you guys would like.
Okay, so I'm going to call our work session meeting to order.
If you could pull them up on the screen, that would be awesome.
Okay, we'll do.
And it looks like, um, on mine, this whole charter school thing is lined out.
We, we, for today, it is, yes.
For today, it is, okay, and we're gonna talk about that in August?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, and then do we have any future work session topics besides those two that anyone would like to discuss um, today or at a later date for the future? No? Alan, no? Catherine, no? Jay, no?
No.
Okay. Not this time, okay, so then I'm gonna move on to the superintendent evaluation timeline and goals.
Okay.
Your turn, Helena.
Yep, and there's, there's the copies of my goals.
What we're gonna, we, we'll work timelines first.
You wanna do the timeline first, okay, I'm gonna
No, no, you have fun. I have the goals up right now.
Oh, you do, okay, sorry, I'll be right back. Um, so I have two goals, and they are totally different from last year's. The first one is related to myself building capacity in special programs. And so it says, the superintendent will build her individual expertise and leadership capacity in special programs, special education, by engaging in targeted professional learning and leadership strategies, ensuring strong oversight and support for students and staff. Uh, by May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-six, the superintendent will present to the board a personal professional learning plan for special programs, special education leadership. So basically, I'm gonna keep track, document, journal what I'm doing throughout the year. And, and I'm going to have documentation of at least two of the following strategies. And so I'm gonna be engaged with a mentor or a peer superintendent with expertise in special programs for guidance and consultation, shifted or delegated, or delegated appropriate operational duties to existing admin staff to allow the superintendents to focus on strategic leadership, special programs. Uh, I'm gonna participate in at least two specialized training conferences or workshops in special education leadership. And then, as a measure of success, a self-reflection report and feedback from the district leadership team indicating confidence, clarity of vision, and actionable next steps for continuous improvement in the district's special programs.
Okay, okay, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I know on our packet that we evaluate you with, where does this fall under that?
It's gonna fall under like, um,
Because we had some difficulty last year with one of them falling under something we weren't sure where. Because we had some difficulty last year with one of them falling under something we weren't sure where.
For sure. In the template from O S B A that we fill out that has the different um, leadership areas, there's also a separate area that lists these goals specifically, um, the superintendent goals that you rate. Um, so it's, uh, Helena has them categorized here under the district priorities. But you could certainly go back and make sure they're falling under those evaluation areas as well.
Okay, we'll probably fall.
Well, I, I, I think for the spad, special, special program one, that would be just falling under a goal versus a um, category cuz this is, cuz that's, that's a unique position that most superintendents are not doing.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine.
And like, like Catherine's saying, there will be a separate area to comment and rate this goal specifically on the evaluation in addition to the other areas.
Okay.
Um, Lenny, can you go back up again? You said you were gonna check in with us in May?
Right, cuz I wanna share what I've done throughout the years. We'll still check in every month.
Okay.
So, yeah. But just the final product of what I've accomplished will be in May.
Okay, could there be, could, would you consider adding something where you're also checking with us monthly at our, um?
No, we can do that. That's fine.
Is that, you know, it'd be great for us to just know how it's going because this is gonna be the first in the school district and hmm, I think in any of the years, any of us have ever had anything to do with the school district.
Yep.
And it'll be important to know what's happening.
Yeah. Cuz we wanna be able to support you.
Yes. Okay, goal number two. Um, which actually got named goal number four by accident. Nobody should have four. No. I missed that. Uh, the superintendent will lead a collaborative process to update and extend the district's strategic plan, ensuring alignment with the board priorities, stakeholder input and measurable outcomes for for at least a twenty-twenty-six to twenty-twenty-nine cycle. And so by May fifteenth, we are at least going to have a draft of an updated strategic plan developed through a structured and inclusive process. Uh, we're gonna have evidence of stakeholder engagement, including opportunities for input from staff, students, families and community partners. And then we're gonna have clear measurable goals and aligned performance indicators for the new cycle, building on lessons from the twenty-three to twenty-six plan. And also with input from O D E because they're gonna tell us what to do a little bit.
Oh, they are.
Uh, I'll get to that in a second. And so then we will formally present to the board an updated strategic plan by the June twenty-twenty-six board meeting. So part of the um, legislate, legislature's work on the K-12 budget was that there is a set of accountability measures that are going to be required. They are some things that you are familiar with, third grade reading, eighth grade math, attendance, ninth grade on track, uh, four-year on-time graduation and five-year completers. I believe those are the six measures. O D E needs to figure out how all, what tools are we gonna be allowed to use to measure? And then there will be a four-year process of they look at us and then they look for growth. It's not supposed to be meeting a fixed target. It's if you grow, if the students improve over time, you are gonna be okay. It's if when you don't grow, that there's gonna be a problem. Now, none of this is, the rulemaking for this is not done yet.
Okay.
And so what exactly is gonna look like, we don't really know. And so some of the pieces of the strategic plan, we're gonna have to have some of those pieces in there. So there will probably, those outcomes, yeah, measurable goals for those particular actions.
Okay.
Yep. So, um, yeah.
And I, I can see this being both a goal and also, um, I'm pretty sure it falls under number one, cuz there's two parts that we would be uh, evaluating you on. One, as a superintendent, what process did you use? How did you engage? And then as a goal, did you accomplish it? You know, what was the content? Did you actually um, present something to us? Um, so I think this can be both.
Okay. Any other feedback on those?
Not me.
Okay.
Anybody else feedback?
No.
Yeah, okay. So timeline, uh, we are in July, so we have presented draft goals. Uh, and then we're gonna look at what the timeline looks like for the evaluation process. Uh, and so by October, well, probably before that, but I will give you my, these goals in a final format. Um, and then in October, the board needs, we need to figure out what does it look like this year? Do we wanna do a targeted feedback survey again? And then look at the standards and the timelines.
But, so do we do targeted feedback surveys every year? Is that something you?
I don't know that you need to.
Not, not necessarily, no.
Okay.
Um, I would request though that the superintendent and board finalized evaluation goes, that be done in September. Work, um, work session that you, that's okay with you? And then the
That's fine. I mean, we're, it's not a, yeah.
But, but then the other things, the other two bullet points you have there, those could be in October.
And so which is it?
So just, her presenting the fin- finalized evaluation goals for the upcoming year would be September's workstation. Then the, the latter two bullet points would be October.
October, okay, got it. Yeah, okay. And, and then also, like, we have work sessions, right? And so we have feedback pieces, um, kinda continue doing what we did last year and just keeping that format.
Oh, so, every month, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm, I'm on with that.
You're on with that, okay. Yeah, um. And so then also having the discussion about like, okay, targeted feedback surveys, that's something we'll wanna do every other year. Or, you know, it's gonna feel to people like, oh, I just did that. Um, but we could decide that later, but so that's there, um.
Okay.
Um, and then we get to February when you start working on the evaluation document.
Okay.
Um, I think that it was helpful to have Janet from O S B A assist, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
How expensive is that, though?
Well, I think if we don't do the targeted feedback survey, I think we could do it as a, as a board ourselves.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is the years that we don't do a targeted feedback survey, the board does it themselves, and the years we're doing a targeted feedback survey, we use, utilize their services to help us work through.
Yeah, I mean, I
Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I mean, I absolutely loved the way she just formalized everything and was drafting it as we were going. But in terms of looking from a financial standpoint, that's definitely something as a board we can do. Ourself.
I tend to agree. It's, I'm not sure the cost, but it's about that targeted feedback piece. There's not, I mean, other than some notekeeping and trying to combine ideas from board members, it's not terribly onerous, I don't think.
I agree.
Yeah.
And, and Helena, I don't know if you heard her. She said it was only about twelve hundred dollars.
It wasn't super expensive. So even with the survey, so if it's something you decide later that you wanna look into, we can do that.
But, but I think it's fine that we do it ourselves. I mean, years they're not doing the targeted feedback survey because they're the ones who run that survey anyway, so.
Yeah, no, I think if you do the survey, they definitely need to, um, they, they're good assistants.
Yeah.
Um, and then, you scroll down a little bit, Nancy. Uh, then we are coming up on, so once we get to, um, a little bit late, earlier in the spring, we're gonna, my contract is up in June. So we're gonna discuss the extension or non-extension and renegotiating that document.
Oh, so that's under the February twenty-ninth?
Yeah, that's early in the spring.
So the contract due date is three-one annually?
That's if, that's for if the board is making like a major change, like terminating a contract. You have to tell her.
Okay.
The contract after that.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, so if you're planning on keeping me, we, you could, we can work on contract length later than that.
So your contract only lasts for three years?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I have no idea.
Okay.
I'm learning a lot.
That's okay. Yep. And then, um, I will report back on my goals when they're all done and all that good stuff. So, and then we start all over again.
Okay, so then we get more goals and
Yep.
When is it that we need to decide, uh, or make all the decisions regarding your contract? June what?
Uh, well, the contract expires June thirtieth. If you are going to make a major change, you have to legally know
Right.
By March first.
Yeah, yeah. That's, I'm so concerned about that one, but the other one.
So, so, right.
But the other one, I, I, you know, we wanna make sure that we're on top of that one. That should be something we start discussing in May.
When, when Catherine, in May?
Like the end of May so that we're
Okay.
We don't, cuz that time of the year, there's so much going on.
Early or even, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe April?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Nancy, could you put it on the calendar?
Yeah.
Thank you. Cuz I won't remember come April. August first, Medicare starts.
All right.
So I do officially have an old brain, no.
Okay. I, that's it for our timeline.
Okay.
And that is a draft, so we can change it. But so Nancy will keep track of that, all those things for us.
Anybody have any more comments about her? Any of that, this stuff? Okay.
No.
So we are going to recess from public session to executive session to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the chief executive officer of any public body, a public officer, employee or staff member who does not request an open hearing. According to O R S one nine-two point six-six-zero subsection two, subsection I.
Okay, so we'll see you guys on the next Zoom link.
Okay.